It was when his leadership first came over to me, it was the first time I'd met him. And he was a very attractive person in terms of getting you going. As a result of that, partly as a result of that, I eventually stood to be a councillor. He was very supportive. I would also say he had the great benefit of having me as his councillor for seven years because it was in my ward. And that was a great pleasure. The other thing that I said in my blog just now, most of the time I was here and he was here, I was on planning. And planning was always very close to his heart. And he had very clear views about what he would like us to vote for. And sometimes I voted, usually I voted in the same way as him because I agreed with him. Sometimes I didn't. And he was very clear in what he expected to happen. But equally, if you didn't do what he wanted you to do, I never once got a complaint about that. He respected the professionalism of his team. And he thought the right thing to do was to follow our consciences, which we did. And he was a good friend, a really powerful leader, and a very determined man. And it's a great loss to see him going at such an early age. Thanks.
You're councillor Lambert. I know that there are likely to be many more people who would like to speak in tribute to Steve Curran, but we also have to be mindful of time and we have other business on the council agenda that we will need to deal with. However, I know I speak for us all when I say that the loss of Steve from the ongoing political life of Hounslow is a great tragedy. As he was a remarkable political talent who left an enormous legacy. On behalf of all members of the council, I would like to send our thoughts and sympathies to Steve's family, family and friends at this sad time. Now it is with great sadness, I also need to announce the death of another former councillor, Mike Nichols. Michael James Nichols, JPMBE, known as Mike, was a longstanding resident of Hounslow, living in Cranford for many years. He first stood for election to the council as Labour candidate in the Hounslow Heath Ward in 1968. Whilst unsuccessful on that occasion, he was elected to the ward at the council election in 1971 and remained a councillor there until he retired in 1986. He was joined as a fellow councillor for the ward by the then newly-elected councillor Jagdi Sharma from 1974, who has continued to represent the ward since that time. As a councillor, Mr Nichols held a number of important roles and posts, including Chair of Education Committee. He was also Chair of the Primary and Special Education Subcommittee and sat on a large number of committees, including the Finance and General Purposes Committee and the Arts and Recreation Committee. Mr Nichols also represented the council on the London Borough's Association, a forerunner of London councils. Even after leaving the council, Mr Nichols retained his interest in local education matters and served as a highly respected and successful Chair of Governors for the Heathland School for four decades. Whilst Mr Nichols left the council many years ago, he has remained a noble figure locally and so will be well remembered by many currently serving members and local residents alike. I've been asked to allow two members tonight to pay short tribute to him and I am happy to do so. So may I first invite councillor Jagdi Sharma to express his views.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. You have said a lot about Mike Nichols, so I'm not going to repeat anything, but only say that it was one afternoon I got this email from his daughter, Emma Alexander. And Emma gave the sad news again to me that your friend has gone. So you can well imagine that a person who has given you so much or has done so much for you, how you can receive his news about passing away. But one thing is that she wrote in that email that Mike died peacefully. And at that time, all the family members around him. And then Mike also had some type of different things from others. He didn't want his family to have a funeral for him. So family, according to his wishes, agreed or arranged a family ceremony or family thing. And also they arranged wake. And when I read that, I was surprised, what will be wake? I didn't know that, honestly. What is wake, how it's celebrated, or what we people do at that time? But when I went today, the wake was today at 4:30 at Fountain. And I was surprised to see that why Mike was so popular? Because that place was full of so many people. Everybody talking and just enjoying. Somebody was having whisky, somebody was having glass of wine, all sorts of things. And then also I knew that because we were, we often used to have together drinks. Then I said, Mike did the right thing at the last moment even. Mike was very well known in education circles, though he was not an educationist. He was very good in giving advice on education matters. He was very good with staff and the teachers. And head teachers were very, very always fond of him because he was always there to help them and give them advice and anything would give them a sympathetic care. He was a union man also and always knew about how to resolve the issues. So Mike was a very, very good person. And in addition to that, I must say that he was Chair of the governing body Heathland School. And that school is a very big school in Hounslow, one lone among all the schools. And Mike Nichols was Chair of the governing body over 20 years. And for that, he also was given MBE. He was made a member of the Excellence Order of the British Empire. So that was Mike, whether it's education or whether there are other issues, Mike was always there. In the Labour Party, he did a lot, gave so much advice and dealt so many issue problems. So Mike will always be remembered by all his friends. As I found, as I said, that when I went there, the place was full of people. That showed that though he was not one of them working with them or do, but as a friend also, he gave everybody good advice and made everybody think that we must do something for our friends. And for children, he was very keen. And at that time, we didn't have infant classes or school. And so we, both of us and our third colleague, we said that we must do something about the infant education. And I can say that Mike is the first one in the borough who started this because he was the Chair of the governing body and sorry, Chair of the Education Committee. And so for that, in Hounslow, he will always be remembered for education especially. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sharma. I echo whatever you said because my, all four children went to Heathland School. And I met him once and he was a wonderful man, wonderful person. May I now ask councillor Tom Bruce to address members about the late councillors Nichols now?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I didn't know Mike as a councillor. He retired in 1986 and I was only two years old, so would have been hard for me to have done that. And I think it's important that we have spoken quite rightly at length about a very recent, a passing of a very recent councillor, someone who we knew incredibly well. This person, Mike, was obviously a councillor a very long time ago, but it's important that we recognise the important part he played in the history of the borough, but also in his role that he played recently in education as well. I got to know Mike when I became a councillor, particularly on Schools Forum, and then even more so when I became Lead Member for Education in 2013. He was Chair of the Governors at Heathland School for a number of decades, I think over 40 years in fact. But just to say that wouldn't be enough about him. He was an enormous advocate for education, as Jagdi has said. He promoted being a governor and the role of the governing bodies in schools generally. And he was an influential voice on Schools Forum throughout the time that I was invited to attend as Lead Member. He was particularly instrumental in keeping Heathland School directly part of the council. Many schools around 10 or 12 years ago, many secondary schools became academies. So although within the council, not directly controlled by the councillor, but he was absolutely adamant as Chair of that governing body that Heathland would remain within the council. And although many schools did become academies, he was then instrumental in ensuring that all secondary schools and schools continued to be a strong partnership in Hounslow and continued to work together. He knew the importance of partnership working, he knew the importance of collaboration within education and within other fields as well, right across the council. And he was a very strong advocate for local government and the power of local government and had a lot of positive words to say about the council and about Steve Curran and his leadership as well. He spoke very warmly about councillor Sharma, having known him for many, many years. And when I first knew him, Jagdi was leader then and was delighted that Jagdi was able to go on and be leader of the council and revelled in the fact that this is someone who was a close friend of his. I'd like to personally thank him for his support that he gave to me on Schools Forum. I was younger, I was younger than I am now when I first became Lead Member. And navigating the politics, not party politics, but the politics of education within local government was not something I was particularly aware of, even though I am from an education background. And his support in helping me understand that and moving through that and understanding how those things worked was incredibly and enormously helpful and I'll be forever grateful. He was very kind, thoughtful, much like Steve Curran, generous with his time, always had a kind word for others and always supportive within that education sphere about how Hounslow Council could do things better, could do things as positively as possible. And his legacy will also live on. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. I know that members will want me to send our thoughts and sympathies to former councillors' Nichols' family and friends. And today, the final sad news this evening is to report an unexpected death of Steve Vincent, the council's much-respected mace-bearer, who passed away on 27th February 2024. Mr Vincent will be well known to members as he has served as the council's mace-bearer in an exemplary fashion for well over a decade and has supported many mayors and deputy mayors during that time. Not just at council meetings, but also at high-profile civic functions such as Remembrance Day ceremonies and inaugural dinners. Steve Vincent was born in Battersea in 1953 and began his career in ICT working for Harrods, the North Hymns Gas Board, the British Council, and finally the London Borough of Merton. During this time, at Merton, Steve took up the position supporting the mayoralty there as a chauffeur and mace-bearer. This proved to be his ideal calling and he ended up working for a number of London Boroughs as a mace-bearer and chauffeur. His wife Carol, to whom he was married for 39 years, has confirmed that he particularly loved his role as mace-bearer at the London Borough of Hounslow, which was shown by the fact that he stayed in the role after retiring from his other positions. In his private life, Steve had a particular passion for classic cars and every summer took great enjoyment in driving to classic car shows across the south of England. I know that I speak for all the council when I say that we are grateful to Mr Vincent for his dedicated work to me and all the past mayors of Hounslow for whom he provided a wonderful and dignified service. I would like to express our condolences and sympathies to his wife Carol, his daughter Jessica, and Hannah, and to all his family and friends. We will now stand for one minute in tribute to the late Steve Curran, Mike Nichols, and Steve Vincent. Thank you, be seated. May I ask if any cabinet member wants to say any words? No? Any cabinet members want to say anything now? Okay, we finish tonight with a small announcement about an amazing council career. I had the pleasure last week of presenting Richard Gould from the council's payroll team with a certificate of dedicated long service just prior to this coming retirement this Easter. Mr Gould has served the people of Hounslow and also generations of members for nearly 55 years, which is an almost unrivaled career of public service distinction. To put that into perspective, Richard joined the London Borough of Hounslow in 1969, when it has only been in existence for four years and he has stayed with us ever since. His first day was literally only weeks after the first person had walked on the moon. There are many people in the chamber today who have been alive for a shorter time that Richard Gould has worked for Hounslow. And he has helped everyone of us at some time or other. As amongst other things, he is the person who administers members allowances, so he has a special place in our hearts. I'm sure that all members will want to join me in wishing Richard a very long and happy retirement and to thank him for his unrivaled service to the council over an amazing 55 years career. We will now move to the next item of the agenda. Agenda item three, minutes. We now come to the minutes of meeting of the council held on 27th February 2024. You can find these minutes on page 12 to 30 of the main agenda. May I ask member if they have any corrections that they wish to propose?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor. On page four, the point I made about special responsibility allowances, it minimises the point I was trying to make. It needs three words and a change in numbers, so it should refer to area four and vice-chairs and cabinet assistants, that's the three words. And the number of potholes should be 1,271, to be accurate and reflect the conversation. Thank you. And then on page eight, where I'm talking about the climate budget, the point that I made there was about that the climate budget must also look at the impact on our local economies. So yes, that includes people and businesses, but I actually use the words deliberately. It's our local economies. Be grateful if that could be made as well. Thank you.
And now, are there any matter arising from the minutes? May I remind that you, that this is just for clarification, not to reopen any debate? Any? Thank you. May I ask member to agree the minutes with a few amendments? Thank you. Agenda item four, petitions. May I ask members if you have any new petitions to present? Yes, Mr McGee?
Mr Mayor, I have to declare an interest because I live in the street concerned. The first petition I've got for you is from residents in my road in Bedford Park asking for traffic and transport to do something about the level of traffic that's increased in our road and the danger to residents from that increase in traffic. And that includes a lot of barricading that's gone up in our road. And then the second petition, which I'll be producing for you later, is about asking for a debate on the waterman's issue.
We now move to the second part of the process. We have no petitions for consideration at the council meeting itself this evening, so may I ask members to note the petitions listed in the report? Thank you. Agenda item five, Safer Communities Strategy 24 to 27, reference report to Borough Council from the meeting of the cabinet held on 18th March 2024. We now come to the agenda item five. Members can find this item at page 36 to 80 of their agenda. May I ask members to note the recommendations we are being asked to agree can be found in the reference report from the cabinet meeting of 18th March 2024, which is part of the supplementary agenda? Okay. May I, okay, that's fine. May I invite councillor Rajiv Grewal to propose the report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the strategy outlines our ambitious plans to deliver on working with communities to keep Hounslow a low-crime borough and a safe place to live, work, study and visit. It also supports the priority on a safer Hounslow set out in the corporate plan. Our crime levels continue to be below the London average. However, like the rest of London, we have seen an increase in reported crime by 3%. But again, this is lower than the London average, which is 5%, which was 5%. These statistics are welcomed, but our fear of crime level is disproportionately higher than actual crimes and needs to be addressed. This new strategy builds on our achievements to date, which include transitioning from a traditional enforcement approach to one that focuses on preventing crimes, successfully implementing our Safer Communities area-based approach through the creation of a new team working with residents in neighbourhoods, a new network for parent carers concerned about their children who may be at risk of criminal exploitation or who are being exploited. We agreed a new VOG plan and I was especially pleased to welcome the Domestic Abuse Commissioner for England and Wales to the borough in February. And she was impressed with our offer, especially our services working with the children. And we held a successful Serious Violence Summit co-designed and co-delivered by local young people. There are many examples I could give, but I want to focus on the plans we have for the next three years. Our overall ambition is simple. We want our communities to be safe and feel safe. We will deliver on this ambition by focusing on three key priorities. Priority one, residents are less affected by serious crime. Priority two, that young people and adults exposed and exploited to commit crimes receive help. And priority three, residents work together to keep Hounslow safe. We will enhance the work we are already doing to prevent crimes by increasing the number of council staff working directly with residents in their neighbourhoods. These offices will further improve how we engage and empower communities to work with us to keep their neighbourhoods safe. We want to strengthen the good work we are doing with our voluntary and community sector partners as they provide invaluable service to those impacted by community safety issues. Our equality, diversity and inclusion work outlined in the A Fairer and More Equal Hounslow Strategy is key to how we keep crime levels low. This is because we know that residents from some of our communities are more likely to experience and be impacted by crime because of who they are. We want to stop this. Therefore, by the end of the strategy, I commit to having in place a new council-wide area-based Safer Communities approach. At the heart of this will be new and improved way of responding to our residents and communities affected by crime, antisocial behaviour and other community safety issues. Finally, the success of this strategy is dependent on all of us working together. I'm confident together we can deliver on the ambitions agreed. And just before I finish, I do want to apologise because some of the data on page four not transposed to page five, this will be corrected, so my apologies for this, but it will be corrected before the report goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that? Councillor Rajiv?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I'll second and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. May I now invite councillor McGee?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We generally welcome this report because it gives us an established benchmark for looking at the way we go forward in the future. It's a very important report and I'm grateful to councillor Garble for doing what she did and to pilot it through and get it into cabinet, get it out again here for us to have a view and to note it. One of the key things here however is that we are talking about transitioning from enforcement to social action. I'm not quite sure I'm happy with that. If we have a law-based society, we need to ensure that the laws as such are enforced. And there's too much sloppiness in some of our police and youth justice system when it comes to people actually being involved in social behaviour that is definitely antisocial and not being called out for it. And we all know the occasional stuff that goes on in the streets. We also know what's now happening recently in the aggravated shoplifting by very often gangs of school churn unfortunately, who create a problem. Katsa Bitolf in the past has actually mentioned to us all that shopkeepers around the borough, particularly those in the area around Chiswick, which I happen to represent, now find that they have to keep their doors locked and actually open the doors to people who want to actually be customers in order to prevent people rushing in and stealing goods without limit. This is the sort of issue that we need to face. So apart from the fact that So, apart from the fact that we're looking at transitioning from enforcement, I actually recommend the report to you, but I'd like that to be looked at very carefully because we are a law-based state, and if we don't enforce the law, we are nothing.
McGregor? May I now ask Consul Ramritman to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really, I mean, my particular take on it. I think the three priorities are great. The only thing is, and I have some reservations on it, are that the assumptions that are being made and applied within this report are probably perhaps too ambitious. We're being told that certainly priority three, residents work together to keep Hounslow safe. Really, how are we engaging these residents? How are we finding out what their concerns are? Because certainly from our police panels, a lot of people aren't reporting crime because on the one oh one number, they hang on for hours and they get cut off at the end of it. And then really, they ring again and they get cut off. And one of the people within the police panel, they said, we refuse to report any of these drug suspects just in case they come back and break their windows. So, they're not reporting crime. So, you know, I fear that there is a huge under-reporting, and that's why overall the crime figures are down, simply because people are not reporting. I mean, everybody I know, certainly in my ward, they're not reporting unless it's nine nine nine. And, you know, if you are looking for engagement, we've cut down what's called the residence forums. They used to meet every four to six weeks. Now they meet on a quarterly basis. So, you know, how are we engaging these people? In page, where are we? Towards the end of the report, anyway, sixteen point three, page ten or forty five, a total of two hundred and eight residents, local businesses, voluntary and strategy organisations, were, what's it called, engaged with and asked for feedback. It's such a small sample size. I don't think it actually clearly reflects. And you can't base a report of this magnitude with such impact on such a small sample size. That is a very deep concern of mine. Not to put Ajmer down, I think it's a good report overall, but I think it needs a lot more work. Page fifty, we've got the crime rate figures, and it's excellent to see some crimes going down. But after robbery, which says no change, everything else is going up. Drug dealing is up four percent. Shoplifting is up four point three percent. Theft from person is up six point two percent. Domestic burglary is up fifteen point four percent. Possessions of weapons, which everybody in Hounslow needs to take a note of because we've had a number of murders around Hounslow, particularly amongst the young people. And then public order, thirty nine point seven. See, if these are not frightening to the residents, I don't know what is. And really, you know, you can't turn around and say, oh, you know what? Heston East, my ward, Heston East has very low crime rate. And then give them these sort of figures to look at. I don't think it'll take us seriously from now on. We need to have more work done on this. Thank you.
May I now ask Consul Tuck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much of what I wanted to say has been said by Consul Mann. I thank Consul Mann for that. I welcome the report, and I know the Safer Community is running many, many programmes to help specifically stopping the youth offences. But I'm slightly concerned as well with the reds coming in at page five in the report, specifically about the domestic burglary and possession of weapons. There have been stabbings in Feltham High Street, and the possession of weapon increasing by thirty seven point two percent is quite concerning for people around the area. And if these numbers are to be discussed with the public, everybody will be asking, like, what is the advantage of running that many programmes if these numbers are not coming down and going up? Thank you.
May I now ask Consul Bowring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's rather interesting to say this is too ambitious, but I think I speak for all Labour councils that we will never be ashamed for being ambitious for our residents. I think as well, we can point out that policing community safety engage at every single area forum to understand the issues that are important to residents. And this is just one example of the multiple channels of engagement and consultation, as well as drawing on the expertise and deep data that the police possess. So, I'm very happy with everything that underpins this report. I'd also like to touch on Consul McGregor's points. He said he didn't like that it sort of had a holistic approach. Now, we need to recognize you cannot arrest yourself out of the problem. You have to go to the source and deal with it there. And I can inform him that we're not going to become a lawless society. We're going to continue to enforce the law. But the issue here is this, if your bath is overflowing, you don't just mop it up with a towel and not turn off the taps. And what this report is showing is how we're going to turn off the taps. So, I completely commend it. It's fantastic.
Bowring? May I now ask Consul Strodrup to speak?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was going to address Consul Mann's points, but I don't think he's interested in listening because he appears to have left the chamber. But nevertheless, I'll quickly do that. And it came out in the report, and we know this throughout, and it plays to something that Consul McGregor said. The fear of crime is generally worse than the crime itself. So, talking up that fear does not help our residents one little bit. And trotting out statistics and saying people, so on one hand, people don't report crime, then the report of crime is going up. We can't have this. We can't have this. We've got to be supporting the officers, we've got to supporting the residents and the police in dealing with crime and not be talking crime up. I've been to some police panels where, when they've been given crime statistics which are low, you almost feel a sense of disappointment that there's not more crime because they want to be outraged about it. Please, please, we've got crime in the borough lower than the London average. Let's not talk it up. Let's reassure our residents that crime is not rampant in our borough. We haven't got hordes of people roaming the streets, mugging people. This is a relatively safe borough for a large capital city, and people should not be afraid of crime. And our job is to reassure people not to scare them, which I believe was what Consul Mann was trying to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Consul Strodrup. May I now ask Amy Croft?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to again support the report and answer a couple of the points made by fellow councillors. I think in terms of priority three, which is around more engagement with the community, that goes to the heart of a number of things that were raised by, I think, Consul Tack and Consul Mann. In order to deal with knife crime, in order to deal with some of the problems that we do face in the borough, albeit not a lot, it's important to engage with the community, and that's exactly what this report is talking about doing. Engaging with the communities that are suffering from the problems, dealing with the root of the issue and going to the heart of it. And going back to what Consul McGregor said about enforcement, of course, this is about enforcement. And you can see in the report, it's talking about having more enforcement as well as these other measures. So, I just want to support the report. I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
So, Croft? May I now ask Consul Giles?
Thank you very much. It's a really interesting report, and like most years, it's pretty comprehensive in what it's trying to do. I think what I still struggle with is the lack of commentary on things like online fraud and the fact that our communities are being impacted by digital crime now. I've said this before, that we have an aging population in Hounslow, and they are the victims of online fraud. And I would like to see something more on that within this. It has mentioned and alluded a lot to the difficulties within the Met Police over the last year. So, I'm glad that there's been consideration given for that. And I think, as many people have said today, we know that the perception of crime is worse. And I think, again, one of the things that I will ask for again for my second year running on this is for the inclusion of the street safe statistics to be included within this report because that is a real indicator of where people in the borough feel unsafe. And it is an initiative that I've spoken about many times within this chamber that I really hope helps to build the picture out on what we're seeing. Again, if we look and speak to traders across our borough, we know that the value of the items being stolen isn't actually that high. You know, it's cash from registers. We live in a predominantly cashed-up society nowadays, but the cost of that crime on a business can be super impactful. So, the cost of a broken window and then having to replace that and then how it impacts your business premium, your insurance and your business premium is something that we need to be aware of. And as Consul Croft said, we are in a society where we are, we've got to look at the roots of the crime and kind of looking at social cohesion. How do we improve? You know, we've heard a lot about pride in the borough today. How do we improve that? We know that in Chiswick, and I'm sure in other parts of the ward, and the reason why I talk about this because we had a meeting with traders and the police less than two weeks ago, is because our crime isn't all local. And it is fantastic to hear from the police that they are now working in joined-up methods, working with the British Transport Police as well as other forces to help track down where some of these perpetrators are coming from. And we know that by having reports like this, it can go one step. But I would like, again, for the probably at least second time of asking, to see more about what we can do to reduce the perception of crime and also to look at how we can support and prevent some of that online fraud, especially for our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Giles? Consul Gill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank Ajmer for a good report, and I do agree with what she said. And engaging with residents, I think that's what we do in Chiswick as I've organised four police meetings. And my fellow councillor Bidof has also organised crime with the shopkeepers, and the police have been in attendance. And this really shows really how the police do engage with our residents, and they take back what the residents tell them, and they then act on it. And I think this was apparent from our last fourth police meeting because the residents were really, really upset, and they did voice their opinion very strongly. And the Commissioner for the three boroughs took really good notice of it and acted on it. And we hope with, in Chiswick, we will be organising a fifth police meeting. And I think that's the way forward, with engaging with the residents and the police. Thank you.
Yes, can Strodrup?
Mr. Mayor, I think everyone agrees it's a good report. Could I propose a move to the vote on it, please?
Thank you. Okay, we are going to, going for vote by show of hands, if that's okay? There is only one for approval, yeah? For noting, sorry. Okay? Yeah. Can you raise your hands, going for? Against? Abstention? Okay. That's approved?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, were we noting or voting?
Noting.
No, no, it's not noting, it's for approval.
It is, sorry. Because it's a reference report, so on the Cabinet report, it was for noting, and this one is for approval. Yep.
We are voting, yeah?
Yes.
I was trying to ignore you, but you know, I thought you know, it's fine.
Mr. Mayor, could we just get some legal advice? Because on page eighty, I think we've got a major error in the report. It says revised January twenty twenty three. I'm sure that's not right. Because the officer involved is Syria Gould, and this is not the sort of thing that I associate with her.
Okay, that's fine, that's noted, yeah?
Thank you very much. I'm so sorry to intervene.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your contributions. Agenda item six, Pay Policy Statement, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. May I now invite Consul Rajivat to propose the report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, the pay policy statement is a statutory requirement, as members will know, under the Localism Act two thousand, twenty eleven, sorry, in which we set out our approach to the pay of our senior leaders and our lowest-paid employees for the next twelve months. Its purpose is to be open and transparent about the way we pay our highest and lowest-paid employees. It needs to be agreed by Borough Council annually, and that's the reason why the report is before us this evening. Any variation to the policy within this twelve-month period would have to be referred back to Borough Council for approval. If I may, I want to draw members' attention to key points arising from the report. As reported to Cabinet in November, two thousand and twenty three, the Chief Executive, in his role as Head of Paid Service, has reviewed the council's chief officer structure. The new structure provides a model for leadership that is more sustainable in the longer term, will meet the financial challenges of the future and be leaner at the top. In addition to changes to structure, we're developing leadership competencies and performance management approaches in line with practice across the whole organisation, which will include personal, professional and organisational development. Also to note is the fact that the council's median pay multiple, that's the ratio of the median salary compared to the highest earner, remains at five to one. This is positive. Our pay ratio, that is the ratio of pay at the top to pay at the bottom, remains stable at nine to one. This is also positive. And it is appropriate for the size and complexity of our organisation, and it compares favourably with the pay multiple in the private and public sectors. We're also in line with our neighbouring boroughs, Hillingdon, Ealing, Richmond, Hammersmith and Fulham, and Spellthorn, across which the average currently published pay ratio is nine to one. Our gender pay gap, which is the difference between what men and women are paid on average, was one point seven nine percent at the thirty first of March, two thousand and twenty three. That does compare to zero percent the previous year. As reported last year, the gender pay gap does fluctuate. And over the previous seven years, our median pay gap has averaged two point five percent and remains well below the Office for National Statistics' National Gender Pay Gap Report of seven point seven percent. The reason for the small increase in our gender pay gap is due to a slight reduction in the percentage of women in our top quartile roles. That's grade PO four, Chief Executive. And that has gone from sixty two point nine five percent, that's three hundred and eighty-eight women in two thousand and twenty two, to sixty point nine seven percent, that's three hundred and thirty-four women in two thousand and twenty three. We also now report on our ethnicity and disability pay gaps, although there is not yet a statutory requirement to do so. So, to draw those out, at thirty first of March, two thousand and twenty three, our median ethnicity pay gap was four percent, which is a positive reduction for four point five percent in two thousand and twenty two. Our EPG is influenced by the disproportion of people from a minority ethnic background in the top quartile. That's thirty seven point nine percent ethnic minority employees compared to sixty two point one percent white staff. But it is worth noting that this data is based on the eighty-six percent of employees who have declared their ethnicity. So, we do not have a full picture around the ethnicity pay gap, but this is just based on responses. Our median disability pay gap is minus two point three percent, meaning that on average, disabled people earn two point three percent an hour more than people who are not disabled. While four percent of our workforce has declared a disability, five point eight percent of staff in the top quartile and five point six percent of staff in the upper middle quartile have declared a disability. So, we do consider this to be positive. Further, our gender pay- Further, our gender pay report sets out the range of initiatives we're progressing as part of our ongoing commitment to EDI across the organisations, and the particular highlights are detailed within the report. So I formally move the report, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a second?
I second the report and reserve my right to speak.
I now invite members to debate the report. Councillor McGregor?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much indeed. And again, a pay policy statement for twenty-four, twenty-five, which gives us a lot of information about what's going on. I just need some clarification. Spinal point, that seems to be the mid of what used to be called banding, the midpoint in banding. Is that what a spinal point is now? Do you know what a spinal point is? Do we know what a spinal point is?
Yes, councillor McGregor, each spinal point is the point on each grade where particular pay bands are. So, and within a grade, as you can see in the report, you've got a number of incremental points. That's a spinal point.
Okay, so it's a revision of the banding exercise we used to do. That's fine, thank you very much indeed. Looking at the report, I'm concerned, again, if you look at page eighty-five, six point five, the Equality Act two thousand and ten, I'm delighted to see that we actually meet all those requirements, and we have done over many, many years, because Hounslow's been an equal pay and equal responsive council for that period of time. But the important point of heart, it is, of course, that we now see other councils falling apart, for example Birmingham, because they completely failed to actually handle this particular hot potato going back in the past. That's a very important factor in the fact that we do this properly. On page eighty-seven, I'm very worried about item sixteen. The staff side has been sent the pay policy statement for information. That's not consultation. That is not consultation. Where's the dialogue? Where's the dialogue with our friends on the staff side, whom I have a good relationship with? What are we doing about that? And the answer is, nothing comes out of it. Perhaps the leader would like to look into this and give me an answer after the meeting. I'd be very, very happy to hear that, and perhaps we can have a discussion about this, because I'm very keen to make sure that we get this right. The other issues that come out also in the pay policy statement, apart from the spinal points, are of course, we are relying on the chief executive to do his own homework and to measure that. And that's fine, because I accept what we have in front of us. It looks perfectly rational and reasonable. But the important thing about these chief officer salary scales is that I appreciate how important it is to actually get the right people in post, and therefore you have to pay what might be called the going rate. That's what we talked about in the eighties, and we should be talking about the capacities, not the going rate. We should actually try and ensure that we offer competitive salaries, absolutely right. And we should also be trying to ensure that we provide performance analysis and performance ratings as well. The pay gap report is comprehensive, and I have nothing much to say about that except to know it's worth reading and understanding, because it'll help us understand how the budgets work later on in the next financial year. It's very important to use this as a basis, given the fact that our establishment costs are the basis for the council tax every year. And we're talking about the establishment costs in this pay policy document. So I welcome the document, because it's a good analysis of what we're doing, although, of course, I have comments and criticisms about particular points, as I've already mentioned to you. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Can I ask councillor Bidoff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a relatively small point. It's on paragraph four point four, which is about implementing the London Living Wage. And I'm not clear on whether, I understand that the date is about administrative need to be able to have time to change the payroll. But what it doesn't say is whether or not the amount is backdated to the date of the award in November, backdated in December. And if it, I think it would be useful to say that, because otherwise it looks as if we're saving money at the expense of the most, the least well-paid. So it's worth saying that, please. Thank you. I'm getting nods, which is why I'm changing that. People are saying it is backdated. Thank you.
Councillor Vikram Grewal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have to take councillor McGregor's word on the eighty, because that was unfortunately a bit before my time. So thank you for that, and councillor Bidoff. I do agree with one thing that councillor McGregor said in terms of commending the report. On the other side of it, I just want to highlight, and the leader did a good job on this as well, some of the real positives within the report. And we must commend progress in this borough. Overall, our pay statement links to our ambition to be a thriving Hounslow, and that consists of a strong local economy, offering good work to well-educated, skilled, local workers. And this report shows that in abundance. As a local authority, we have a fiduciary responsibility to do right by our residents by acting as an example to other employers when it comes to paying our staff fairly. We have made fantastic progress in addressing the disability and ethnic pay gaps in particular, but also being consistent with our peers when it comes to the overall pay gap, as the leader said. More specifically, the council pay ratio remains stable at nine to one, which is in line with our peers. Secondly, as of the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-three, the median ethnic pay gap was four percent. That is a zero point five percent reduction from the previous year. As an ethnic minority, that makes me incredibly proud of this report. On our median disability pay gap, it is minus two point three percent. So that means that an average disabled person employed by London Borough of Hounslow earns two point three percent more per hour than people that are not disabled. That's, again, another statistic to be incredibly proud of. Whilst four percent of workforce has declared disability, five point eight percent of our staff in the top quartile and five point six of staff in the upper-middle quartile have declared disability. This is a huge positive side of it as well. Sorry, I'm not being uber positive, but I think I needed to be, following some previous contributions. And something that, as I said, we should be proud of. The gender pay gap, yes, has gone up by one point seven nine percent, but this happens with natural fluctuations and turnover of staff, and this was alluded to previously. Agree, it was zero percent in the past, when reported, but it's still two point five percent, and well below the ONS National Gender Pay Gap figure of seven point seven percent. So although it's gone up from zero, and that's not ideal, and I'm sure the chief exec and his staff will try their utmost to make sure this time next year that will come back down near zero, we're still way below the national average. So I think that's a really important point. In terms of our officers, because ultimately this is about paying them fairly and competitively, I'm sure across the House we'll get an agreeance in this, that when residents need our officers most, they're always there for us, whether that's during a global pandemic, or when our residents need them most, whether that's being homeless, in times of distress, or what have you. So it brings me immense pride that we're paying them fairly. It also gives me immense pride when some of our top staff here get poached by other boroughs and promoted to more senior roles than they had here. Yes, that can cause a problem, because we have seen some very talented staff leave, and our leader, you know, his facial expression showed that, but it's a testament to the quality of our staff here. You know, we won council of the year for a reason, and our staff get poached for a reason. So, Mr. Mayor, I will finish off by saying that this report shows that London, the London Borough of Hounslow, as an employer, has a quality at its heart, and it shows our values. We're committed to ensuring the people are paid fairly for all the great work that they do. So on that note, I commend this report.
Thank you, councillor Grewal. Councillor Giles, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sure there will be more said and further details reported. And I believe as one of the largest employers within the borough, it is great to see that some of those recommendations and requests that I've made from previous years to have our ethnicity pay gap report as part of, included as part of our reporting is fantastic to see, because, and I hope that we get this on a more steady basis going forwards. It is, I think what we need, there's a couple of points I want to make here, is that it's worth noting that our gender pay gap seems to be headed in this fluctuation. I feel like we've got this two-year cycle of hitting zero and then kind of correcting or not correcting, and going in the opposite direction. And I believe as last year, and as the leader has said, it was because of seniority in roles. So I would like to know if that's going to be rectified, or whether we're going to be looking at bringing those lowest paid up. So that's that point. And then, fantastic to see the ethnicity reporting. I know that this is the first time we've published it, but the fact that we've got four years' worth of data means that we can start to see those trends as well. Again, I think we see this fluctuation within that. And then looking at the disability pay gap, I know that we're in the negative. And again, my curiosity is such that I would like to know if that's aligned with our gender pay gap, where we're employing disabled people at higher levels and/or more senior roles. So I think it would be nice to see what we do as a council to encourage entry-level employment for those with disabilities, to see if we can, to see if that is a factor. I don't know the answer to this. So very great to see all of these changes, and that's it. Thank you.
Councillor Giles? Councillor Siddiqui?
Thank you very much, respected mayor. I think I would speak about this policy statement from a perspective of how the talent has acquired and how we've sort of, you know, worked through our organisation as a borough of, as the local council. I think the important thing is that when you review this statement, you would not probably get one or two or three reasons to support it. You will get through one hundred and eighty-eight thousand reasons to support it, because these are the people to whom this service is delivered. These are the people who rely on these officers, who would be working throughout, basically, to deliver council services to them. So I think it's very important for all of us, sort of, you know, to look at that aspect of the report also, and also how we sort of, you know, in a way, manage the talent and retain the talent. My respected fellow councillor Vikram did mention that. A lot of our talent get poached, and they would sort of, you know, go in higher position, which is all good as far as the reflection on the organisation. But we have to do more to retain that talent, because talent has no flags and no frontier, because we live in a very fast environment. People can change councils, cities, countries very fast, and we need to sort of, as a council, we are in a very competitive market. So I think it's very important that we do give full consideration to that. And we also sort of, you know, acknowledge the fact that we, as an employer, have to provide fair and appropriate level of pay and remuneration, ensuring our colleagues receive a fair day pay for a very hard day's work, basically, because I think these officers are tremendous in terms of their delivery. So we should acknowledge that fact. So I think with the respected mayor, I would suggest all the colleagues in the opposite aisle also to support this statement, not just because it's prudent, not because it does not have any financial implication, but because this would ensure that our two hundred and eighty-eight thousand valued resident of Borough of Hounslow will continue to get excellent services. So we should sort of, you know, acknowledge across the aisle, this statement as approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Siddiqui. May I now ask councillor Rajivath to sum up the report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to view very quick points, councillor Bidoff, just formally for the minutes, yes, it is backpaid. Councillor Giles, on your point on gender pay gap, the chief executive is now going, having done the top three tiers of the organisation, is now looking at the next ones shortly after Easter, and will address some of the issues that you raised on that. If I may, I'll come back to you on the point that you made around disability, because I need to look into that a little bit more, so I will come back to you on that one. Councillor McGregor is not in the chamber, but, I mean, just to say, it's not the chief executive that marks his homework, it's me that marks his homework. And I do take a little bit of issue with the suggestion that it's about going rate. The whole purpose of every review, actually, that this chief executive and the chief executive before was around accountabilities, jobs, working more corporately. It's not just about money, it's about delivering for our residents, as many of the speakers have said, and working without boundaries between departments. And I think that's really, really important to acknowledge. Whilst I appreciate it was a bit tongue-in-cheek from councillor McGregor, it's important to correct any perception that it's just about going rate, it is about the job people do and paying them fairly for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajivath. May I now ask a member to vote on the two recommendations, one for noting, one for agreeing, by show of hand, if that's okay? So, in favour? Okay. Against? Abstentions? No? So noted and agreed. Agenda item seven, appointments to committee and other bodies. We now come to the appointments, which is a standing item on our agenda. May I also draw members' attention to the nominations which are included in the supplementary agenda? Okay. Yeah, the members are very quick today, before me, you know, before asking, they are agreeing it. So I think they all want to go home quickly, you know. Okay. All right, that's taken. Fine. Agenda item eight, decision taken under urgency arrangements. May I ask members to note the report listed on the agenda front sheet and wait, oh, yeah, can you note? Yeah, noted. Thank you. Agenda item nine, questions from members. Councillor Jack Embley to ask councillor Ajmere Grewal, cabinet member for Safety and Regulatory Services. We now come to the part of the meeting where we deal with council questions. We have six this evening and a total of forty-five minutes to deal with them. However, before we get onto the questions included in the agenda, I want to clarify that a request has been made by councillor John Todd for an urgent question under the Constitution of paragraph nine point three of the council procedure rules in relation to the recent news of the unexpected closure of the Watermans Art Centre. I have discussed this question with councillor Shivraj Grewal, the relevant cabinet member, and also the monitoring officer, and having heard their views, I have determined that whilst the question itself is a reasonable one, I am not on this, okay, and prepared to accept an urgent question. I am not on this, prepared to accept this. The reason for this is to, the need to keep urgent matter to a minimum for access to information reasons, and also because the information can be provided by other means. To reiterate the point, councillor Shivraj Grewal has this afternoon provided councillor Todd with a copy of his statement on the matter by email, and has requested that it also be provided to all members by being included on the back page of the supplementary agenda, as on the back of the supplementary agenda, for everyone. I now invite councillor Jack Embley to ask his question. But before I ask him, just for a second, would the members agree, as the question is in red, and moving straight to answer, is that okay? You like asked, okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Pardon me. Is it unexpected introduction of Watermans, and councillor Rees Williams is trustee of the Watermans? Would you like to declare your interest, councillor Rees?
So now you're asking, yeah, declare the interest. Yeah, I'll declare I'm a trustee of the Watermans board before we go on with this item.
Thank you. So you like to ask the question, yeah? So you read the question, go ahead.
I thought you were going to stop me again, Mr. Mayor. Do again, why not? No, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Since the horrific attack by Hamas against innocent Jewish civilians on October the seventh, antisemitism in our city has risen by over one thousand percent, whilst anti-Muslim hatred has risen by over three hundred and thirty-five percent. What steps has the lead member taken to reassure and protect local communities against this wave of hatred that is striking our city?
May I now ask councillor Ajmere Grewal to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Embley. As lead member for Safety and Regularity Services, I, along with the rest of the Cabinet and elected members, shared our shock and sadness at the event that occurred in Israel and Gaza in October twenty twenty-three. Immediately following the event of seventh of October, the leader, I, and other key members reached out and offered to meet with both the Jewish and Muslim communities of Hounslow to show our support and offer reassurances around their personal security. We continue to work and engage with both faiths through Hounslow Friends of Faith and our CPU Prevent team. I've taken part in a number of events to highlight our concerns for those caught up in the conflict, and we have attended vigils for peace facilitated by those of the Jewish, Muslim, and other faiths. Through the CPU Prevent team, we have continued to engage with the Jewish community in Hounslow and offered reassurance together with details of whom to contact should they experience hate crime. Locally, I'm aware of an increase in the Prevent team's workload around the Israel-Hamas ongoing conflict, where Hounslow has experienced an increase in online content. in online content, referrals directly linked to the conflict. Hounslow is no different to other boroughs in this regard, and the Prevent team is taking active and positive steps to ensure extremism and extremist rhetoric does not find any way into the borough. This is through regular meetings with community and faith groups to ensure they know of the support available, that they are aware of referral and reporting pathways, and where necessary, have access to statutory and non-statutory partners in Hounslow. As a council, we are against all forms of hate crime, and we would encourage those affected to report these offences to the police. We work closely with the police's dedicated hate crime performance and outcome officer, supporting victims and ensuring appropriate action is taken against perpetrators.
So councillor Grewal, councillor Emsley, do you have supplementary? Okay, go ahead.
First time. And thank you councillor Grewal for that answer. One issue that's been raised with me by local constituents in Chiswick was the council's decision to postpone an exhibition of Jewish life due to fears about the rise in hate crime in the borough in December last year. Four months on, a new date for the exhibition hasn't yet been announced. Are concerns about hate crimes still as high as they were when that decision to postpone the event was taken? And if they are, what action can she commit to in order to combat antisemitism and make this borough safe enough to reschedule that event in the near future?
The Prevent team are looking carefully into this, and there is a date being scheduled towards the end of the year, hopefully November, but not confirmed yet, but it will be. Thank you.
Councillor Siddiqui.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, for giving me the opportunity. I would also say that whatever happened on, on, with the Hamas situation, probably we should also...
Mr Mayor, is this within the standing orders?
Okay, I think this is just a question and answer, you know, so sorry. So we move on to agenda item 10. Councillor Ranjit Gill to ask councillor Ajmer Grewal, cabinet member for safety and regulatory services. Councillor Ranjit Gill, may I ask you to ask your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Last year, the cabinet member voted for a motion calling on her to engage with local councillors to better communicate council initiatives to improve safety. To date, councillors in Chiswick have received no communication from her on council initiatives to improve safety. Can she, can she please update this council on when we can expect to see this improved communication? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. May I invite councillor Ajmer Grewal to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So popular today, I wish I dressed properly. All eyes are on me. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Gill, thank you. Community safety initiatives, projects and programmes are communicated regularly internally through Members Matters. They have a page dedicated to all aspects of safety initiatives, as well as the council's Intranet. Externly, this is communicated via council's website and residents' e-letters. Hounslow Matters Quarterly magazine has a dedicated community safety page. The council's social media channels are used to, are used where relevant communication from the police is also reshared. There was a column focused on community safety in Hounslow Herald in November, a cabinet question time, at cabinet question time rather, we talked about community safety and the work the council is doing in partnership with the police and other stakeholders. And at cabinet question time at West Thames College, we hosted an information and advice stall. Teams from community safety and enforcement attend all area forums and engage with members and the community through the market stall events and open forum sessions. At the next Community Safety Partnership Board meeting in April, I have asked for a discussion with the police, how we can together communicate stronger, more positive messages to reduce the fear of crime across all areas in Hounslow. There are four Safer Communities coordinators covering the borough, with one specifically designed to the Chiswick area. I can't see councillor Gill. And I don't like talking to them when I can't see their face, thank you. So there are four safety community coordinators covering the borough, and one specifically dedicated to the Chiswick area. The coordinators are responsible for working directly with communities, including ward councillors, to understand crime issues, and they communicate the work they are doing to address the issues. This also includes site visits with councillors. For example, in November, on November 29th last year, a Chiswick Riverside Ward Walk with councillor Giles, councillor Amy Croft and director of communities took place. In February 28th, a night walk was attended by one of the coordinators, along with you, councillor Ranjit Gill. And prior to that, councillor Emsley and councillor Stroud, again with the coordinator, visited Chiswick Path following burglaries. And more recently, I attended the Chiswick meeting with the businesses, the second one. Following this, I have requested a police plan to address the specific concerns raised by the community. And as a direct result of concerns, there was a day of action, two days of action rather, when teams across the council worked with police and community partners, partners at a pop-up crime prevention stall outside the former Chiswick Police Station. They talked to local businesses and residents, further identifying local concerns and discussing ways to reduce crime. So we are on it. And the coordinators are there on my behalf, giving you all the information. Councillor Gill, thank you so much.
Councillor Gill, do you have supplementary?
Yes, of course I do.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, thank you councillor Grewal. And you don't have to dress any more than you normally are. You already look wonderful and beautiful. So I don't know why you're saying you need to be more presentable. You're always presentable. So anyway.
That was the question, fantastic. Thank you.
No, that, that was just a comment. Well, I'm glad it brought some light relief to the borough council meeting. Anyway, moving on. The motion that the lead member backed also called for improved external communication. Instead of backing our plan for more informed officers, she voted to send a few more tweets. Since that motion was passed, could the lead member tell us how she has improved external communication about community safety and what her favourite safety-related tweet has been? Thank you.
Want to respond?
Thank you. I'm going to say the same thing again. I've got four coordinators, area-based coordinators in the borough who are talking externally to businesses and residents. And we will carry on talking to them and getting their views. Thank you.
Point of order, please, Mr Mayor.
What is it?
Could I propose that we suspend standing orders? Because there's only 45 minutes allowed for questions, then 30 minutes for motions. So if we don't suspend standing order, we're likely going to run out of time on both those.
Do we agree?
Can we put that to a recorded vote, please, Mr Mayor?
Recorded, Mayor.
This is filibustering, Mr Mayor, wasting more time.
I know, but you know, we, once it's requested, then we have to do it here.
Clearly, I've invited...
Do you have a second for that, you know?
It's in the constitution, but having invited members of the public to listen to a particular motion, the Conservatives now seem to be keen to talk that motion out. And I would really hope that these people at the back had not come all this way for, for this party to play cheap political games. It's very disappointing, Mr Mayor.
It is, you know, but you know, it's, once it's said, and, and is there a second for that? Yeah. Okay. So we will go for the vote, yeah. Vote to chief executive to do the vote, yeah?
Hello, members. So a recorded vote has been requested. I'm going to call out each member in turn, in order that we can record whether standing orders should be suspended or not. Please indicate whether you're for that motion or against it, or wish to abstain. Councillor Aqsa Hamid.
For.
Councillor Mohammed Shakil Akram.
For.
Councillor Madya Haseem.
For.
Councillor Lily Barth.
Councillor Rashid Bhatti.
For.
Councillor Joanna Bedof.
For.
Councillor Dan Bowring.
For.
Councillor Tom Bruce.
For.
Councillor Gazalabat.
For.
Councillor Unser Chowdhury.
For.
Councillor Valna Chopra.
For.
Councillor Amy Croft.
For.
Councillor Sukhbi Dalwal. Councillor Catherine Dunn.
For.
Councillor Jack Emsley.
For.
Councillor Adesh Afamahan.
For.
Councillor Richard Foote.
For.
Councillor Gabriella Giles.
For.
Councillor Ranjit Gill.
For.
Councillor Ajmer Grewal.
For.
Councillor Peter Grewal.
For.
Councillor Vikram Grewal. Oh dear, all right. Councillor Riaz Gal.
For.
Councillor Bhishnagurung.
For.
Councillor Alan Joseph.
For.
Councillor Nukalim. Not here. Okay. Councillor Farah Kamran.
For.
Councillor Absalkyani.
For.
Councillor Gomel Lal. Councillor Guy Lambert. Councillor Karma Datmalek.
For.
Councillor Amrit Man. Not here. Oh dear. Councillor Jaromir McGregor.
For.
Councillor Junamahi Mia, pardon me. Councillor Alim Mitchell. Councillor Ramashisaw.
For.
Councillor Samina Nagra. Councillor Shantanu Rajwad. Councillor Sayarazza.
For.
Councillor Faran Marman.
For.
Councillor Denis Said. Councillor Sue Sampson. Councillor Baro Sarai. Councillor Salman Shaheen. Councillor Marina Sharma.
For.
Councillor Jagdi Sharma.
For.
Councillor Emma Sidhu.
For.
Councillor Raginda Sidhu. Councillor Aftab Siddiqui. Councillor Karen Smith.
For.
Councillor John Strotherb.
For.
Councillor Kuldeep Tak.
For.
Councillor Pete Thompson. Councillor John Todd. Councillor Mohammed Ameer. Councillor Rees Williams.
For.
That is... Oh, in time, yeah.
Chief exec, councillor Grewal, for.
Thank you very much, councillor Grewal. That's unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you. Okay, come to the business, please. Agenda item 11. Councillor Joanna Bedof to ask councillor Ajmer Grewal, cabinet member for safety and regulatory services. May I now invite councillor Joanna Bedof to ask her question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could the cabinet member outline the precise roles and numbers of people in each role of the 40-strong team patrolling high streets and deterring crime that she promoted at the previous borough council meeting, that's the 27th of February for clarity, including whether there are plans for change following her attendance at the meeting on the 14th of March in Chiswick with retail hospitality and service business ratepayers? And thank you very much for accepting our invitation to do that. And how will success be measured?
Mayor Grewal to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Bedof. There are 33 officers across four area-based teams within the neighbourhood enforcement service. The team's work generically with all offices covering all duties, including the patrolling of council's housing estate, parks and open spaces on a proactive and reactive basis dependent on need. The service provides a dedicated out-of-hours noise service on Friday and Saturday nights from 10pm to 2am. And in, and in addition, a response to noise complaints across all domestic and commercial premises within the borough, as well as, as well as other statutory nuisances, including odor, light dust and smoke during the service's extended operating hours. The team also responds to unauthorised travellers, traveller encampments on council-owned land, initiating enforcement action where required. The service is responsible for the investigation and enforcement of flight tipping and waste issues on all private land, including alleyways, front and rear gardens. They work closely with Thames Water, the Environment Agency and other key stakeholders. In addition to the enforcement team, we have our Safer Communities area-based approach delivered by Safer Communities operational team. In addition to the coordinators I mentioned earlier, within this team, we have Safer Communities workers specifically for 18 to 25-year-olds involved in serious violence. We have recently provided additional funding to expand the team to include new officers focused on non-HRA ASB and complex cases such as those linked to HMOs. These also, this also includes three new patrolling and enforcement officers. These officers will be deployed to crime hotspots, including high streets and parks. The new roles are currently being recruited to. We will communicate to the public when they are fully operational. In June, I will be taking a report to cabinet, which will signal how all our work and resources aimed at keeping the community safe will work as a system going forward, which will be aligned to the priorities of our new Safer Communities strategy, which we considered here at the council earlier today. Thank you.
Your councillor Grewal, Joanna Bedof, do you have supplementary?
Yes, I have.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for that answer. I'm not sure about the maths, but I think what we've got is 40 people in total, 33 officers, four controlling coordinators and three new patrolling officers. Could you please explain how that will work with four town centres needing to be patrolled? It's 10 people per town centre. And what we have always called, often called for, sorry, we previously, the Conservative group and now I, have been calling for a law enforcement team to patrol 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, like Hammersmith does. This team can't possibly achieve that, can it?
Councillor Ajmer to respond?
They can't. We are trying to recruit. And as in one, we have more funds, we will recruit more enforcement officers. In the meantime, we are working with the police and our enforcement teams to protect all our town centres as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grewal. Councillor Emma Sidhu, agenda item 12. Councillor Emma Sidhu to ask councillor Ajmer Grewal, cabinet member for safety and regulatory service. Councillor Emma Sidhu to ask question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Military veterans are extremely important part of our community, and we must ensure that they are supported in the light of the sacrifice they have made for our country and our safety. Can a cabinet member of community safety please tell us what initiative Hounslow council have done to recognise our veterans in the borough? Thank you.
Councillor Ajmer Grewal to respond?
Thank you, councillor Sidhu, thank you. Okay. Our work with those who served and are serving, whether for one day or for many years, has been formally operational since we first signed the Armed Forces Covenant back in 2002, 2002, sounds better. We were one of the first boroughs across London to do so. We amended policies in our housing services, removing the necessity for those armed forces personnel to have five years evidenced residence in Hounslow. We ensured and continue to ensure that our service personnel families are fully supported to access excellent educational opportunities across the borough, irrespective of when they entered the borough owing to deployment. We have supported and hosted with the Royal British Legions the annual Remembrance Day events across the borough. We have celebrated and recognised those who served and sadly fallen during the conflicts over the years, especially...
over the years, especially on Armed Forces Day, and will continue to do so. With the emergence of the Armed Forces Covenant duty in two thousand and twenty-three, Hounslow is working to ensure we are not only compliant with the tenants of the duty, but that our work surpasses what was required of us statutorily. We have adopted the MOD's definition of a veteran, namely a person who has served even one day, and we also confirmed that we will work to ensure none of our veterans are disadvantaged in accessing our services. We have been awarded the Military of Defence Employers' Recognition Scheme Bronze Award. The award confirms our statement of intent to support defence personnel. We have successfully commenced the delivery of the Hounslow Armed Forces Covenant Veterans' Cafes project. To date, we have successfully delivered ten veterans' cafes in accessible venues located around the borough in key locations, where the majority of our veterans reside. We have engaged with over three hundred and fifty veterans, many who welcomed the opportunity to meet peer-to-peer, reducing any sense of isolation. We are working with the local CCG to gain accreditation for local GPs' surgeries to become veteran-friendly GP practices. Finally, we have set up the Armed Forces Covenant Advisory Board, ensuring our commitments are on track and our veterans and their families know how valued they are in Hounslow. We are honoured and indeed privileged to be able to support our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gerwal. councillor Sidhu, do you have a supplementary?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Samina Naghrath to ask councillor Samia Chaudry, cabinet member for adult social... Yeah, this is the agenda item. So I'm just reading the agenda item just a minute. Let me finish first. councillor Samina Naghrath to ask councillor Samia Chaudry, cabinet member for adult and social care, public health and transformation. Ask councillor Samina Naghrath to... May I ask Samina Naghrath to ask this question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's my question to Samia Chaudry, but she's not here, so I hope the leader can give answer. Okay, as you will know, the NHS waiting list, Health Sky Road located, and GP access is a concern for many in our borough. Can the cabinet member for adult social care and public health tell us what Hounslow Council is doing for residents and their health in the face of government inaction? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Naghrath. councillor Chaudry has given her apologies for this evening, so may I ask councillor Rajwat to answer this question in her place?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Naghrath for your question. You're absolutely right. Government is inactive on this, but I can report that Hounslow Council and our partners in the NHS and across the system are very much active and filling the void that is created there. I'll give you a brief summary, and then if I may write to you with more detail, well, actually councillor Chaudry will once she's back from holiday. So our ambitious actions in this area are set out in our joint health and wellbeing strategy twenty-three to twenty-six, and that is created with our local NHS partners. And the actions are notably to reduce and halt the increase in obesity for children and adults, reduce smoking prevalence, improve dental health of children, increase the number of people in the borough regularly exercising. And we have these ambitions as they contribute to improving, to improving the general health of our residents, children and adults, enabling them to live healthy lives. You may have seen, councillor Naghrath and other colleagues would have seen, our health outreach team do a fantastic job, they've done vaccines, but they also provide direct information, advice and health improvement services to our community. And I, I'm sure you'll agree with me, they are well regarded by our residents as well. Through our partnership work with the local NHS and health colleagues in our borough-based partnership, we're focused on seven work streams in which we'll collaborate to improve services to contribute to the wellbeing of our population. So an example, so some examples of this, working on false prevention in the frailty programme, improving support for people with dementia and their carers in the frailty programme board, improving access to services for children with mental health support needs in the children with disabilities and complex needs programme. In terms of GP appointments, you referenced that in your question. GP practices across Hounslow have increased the overall number of appointments available to patients. Comparing to quarter three twenty-two, twenty-three to quarter three in twenty-three, twenty-four, there's been an increase of twenty-three percent in appointments across face-to-face, telephone and digital options. All practices are working on plans to further improve access to services, and over the next year, practices will be developing plans to improve same-day access services. These further improvements aim to make it easier for patients who need to speak to or see a doctor on the same day. In terms of hospital waiting lists, all hospitals have plans in place to reduce overall waiting times in line with national requirements. Waiting times have increased as a result of the pandemic, but West Mid is working hard to reduce these, and it would be remiss of me not to talk about some really good joint work that we're doing. So following work commissioned by the council, North West London ICB, West Middlesex, West London Trust, primary care and community services, to look at how we can work on better integration with an initial focus on frailty services, work is being taken forward on determining the best way of improving services that deliver great integration across all of our services. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
councillor Rajwat? councillor Naghrath, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, leader.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think your, your mic was off, but it's okay. Thank you, I heard you.
Do you want me to repeat?
No, no, it's absolutely fine, thank you. Okay, so I've seen the brand-new contactless card parking machine, which has been set up across the borough, and I think they're a great addition to the borough. Can a cabinet member for recreation, public spaces and parking please provide us with an update on the progress of the rollout and its impact for our residents? Thank you.
May I now invite councillor Shaheen to respond, please?
Thank you very much, councillor Raza, for that question. Now, this, this council is a listening council. It's one of the hallmarks of this administration, and I think it's fair to say that when we think some things could be better, when we think some things could be improved, we are not afraid to change policy, and this is a key example of that. When a minority of residents came to me and said that they felt digitally excluded by the pay-by-phone system for their parking, I was very pleased to bring forward these new card-based parking machines on our streets. They are now available in, during this initial trial period that will last for the next six months. They are now available in twenty locations, thirteen car parks and seven stop-and-shop locations across the borough. Now, they're very simple to use. You switch them on, you select your language, available in all the most commonly spoken languages in Hounslow, you type in your vehicle registration, and then it gives you the correct tariff for your vehicle, lower tariffs for low-emitting vehicles and free parking where it's available, or free parking for blue badge holders. It knows what the correct tariff it is for your vehicle, and then you simply pay by a tap of the card or not if it's free parking. Very simple to use, and as a result of their simplicity, has already resulted in over three thousand five hundred transactions using the very limited number so far on our streets in only the last few weeks alone. They were introduced less than a month ago. For me, that sounds like it's pretty positive news, it sounds like there's good uptake, and residents who've spoken to me about it have told me they find them very simple to use and a breath of fresh air. So I'm, I'm, I'm very encouraged by the data that we're seeing so far, and I hope if this trial continues in such a measure, in such a manner, we may see this rolled out across the borough.
councillor Shaheen? councillor Raza, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
With this, we are moving to agenda item fifteen, motions proposed by councillor Pritam Gerwal and seconded by councillor Danish Said. We are now at the part of the agenda devoted to motions. We have three motions to consider this evening, and only thirty minutes in which to discuss them, so may I ask member to bear this in mind when making contributions. We therefore now move on to the first motion, which can be found at agenda item fifteen.
Sorry. May I extend the standing orders to go beyond the thirty minutes before we got until eleven, haven't we?
Okay, so, okay, okay, we need, there's a note we need to, we were just asked by the monitoring officer to give this information. Members have expressed a view that it would be helpful to be advised five minutes before the thirty minutes for discussion for motion. It is up, it is up to allow for an extension for a vote to take place. Yeah, is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We therefore now move on to the first motion, which can be found at agenda item fifteen. I now therefore invite councillor Pritam Gerwal to propose the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to propose this vital motion on local government finance, something all my colleagues across the political divide should agree, is one of the utmost importance. Public services are the backbone of our society and something our residents across the borough rely on. We all know this from the caseworks we receive from our residents, but our public services are in decline, and the recent budget announcement from the Chancellor shows there is no long-term solution to reverse this decline. Chancellor has provided no long-term plan on how to fix the housing crisis, no longer plan, no long-term plan on how to address the pressures in the adult care services, and no long-term plan on how to properly fund our councils. The Chancellor cannot say he was not warned. The Local Government Association wrote to him in January of this year, noting that councils up and down the country of every political flag are facing significant challenges in balancing their budgets without affecting local services. Did he listen? No, he didn't. Your Labour administration at Hounslow Council continues to transform services and think outside the box to protect our residents, to tackle this cost of living crisis, a cost of living crisis that is of this government's own making. Back in two thousand and ten, David Cameron, or Lord Cameron as he is known now, was first elected and told us that we needed to cut back public services to the bone in order to protect our future. That austerity was a quick fix. Fast forward fourteen years of Tory governance, and we are looking at the worst parliament on record for living standards. This motion asks the government merely to do this job, to seriously enable councils in England to set their budget over multi-year cycles, therefore creating a long-term plan and to restore the level of local government funding in real term to the level of two thousand and ten. This we must do to save our public services and protect our Hounslow residents. With this, I move the motion, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can I now invite councillor Danish Said to second the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Tonight, I am pleased to second this motion, a motion which is so relevant to all councils across the UK in these unprecedented times of needs. There is one word that symbolizes the future of local government finance under this government, and unfortunately, that word is uncertainty. Councils are uncertain about the future of our public services, residents are uncertain about the future of their public services, and the government are uncertain about the future of all public services. As my councillor, councillor Gerwal said earlier, in two thousand and ten, the Conservative government came to power, and they told us all that we needed to live with austerity, austerity for a few years in order to make the UK economy grow again. Well, that did not happen, and now you have the Chancellor, the Right Honourable Jeremy Hunt, telling us that, and I quote, "We shouldn't fall into the trap of thinking more spending buys us better public services." How dare he? I mean, that made me utterly gobsmacked. Councils such as Hounslow have been doing what they can to negate the rising demands and huge falls in their funding, thanks to the awful economic picture. You only need to look at this council's recently passed budget to see how we are yet again protecting frontline services for our residents in the face of these challenging times. At this time, the government only provides a one-year settlement, which gives us absolutely no certainty to tackle this economic crisis. This is why we are calling for a multi-year settlement, so as to give Hounslow residents what they deserve and to protect our services.
Thank you, councillor Danish Said. Thank you. May I now invite members for debate? May I also, yes, councillor Chaudry? Okay, I thought you, you wanted to say something, okay. So may I also remind members to be very brief and concise in their debate? Thank you. councillor McGregor?
Mr Mayor, thank you once again for the privilege you've given me of responding to this particular motion. It's interesting, isn't it? Earlier this evening, we talked about memories of an individual, memories of Steve Caren. Quite right, absolutely right, well deserved. But this is not a well-deserved motion because memories are very short. Let's wind the clock back, as we seem to have done this evening, to two thousand and ten. During the administration of Gordon Brown, Britain's national debt through quantitative easing rose at a logarithmic rate on a daily basis. If you look at the balance sheet, the national balance sheet, at the time when the coalition government of the Liberal Democrats and Conservatives took over, you will have seen that the balance sheet for the United Kingdom was in a very poor state. Now, the source of that was nothing to do with us, it was the collapse of the American property market and very bad capital accretions in America. But coming back to where we are now, let's think about our memories of Covid, Covid nineteen. So between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-three, not a single local authority in this country was required to put anybody on furlough. All our local authority employees were given full-time employment to cope with Covid nineteen. That was a huge cost. Now, when you have these costs brought forward and rolled over, the balance sheet needs to have some air and some room. Sometimes the economy isn't strong enough irrespective of our ambitions, and you are ambitious, why not? But the point is, you can be ambitious and fail in delivery, and that's what this budget tells us it is. It's another scornful budget. We have effectively got, to use common language, we have increased overdrafts within the borough, we have uncashed savings promises. I mean, look at the balances brought forward from last year and the previous year and the previous year in the medium-term financial strategy, not a dicky bird, not a peep from anybody here on the Labour side about the damage that does to the internal finances of the borough. And the important thing about it is, well, would, would you like to make a, like I make an intervention? Who wants to make that intervention? Well, no, wait, 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 wait.
Can we have a one meeting, please?
Mr Mayor, I want protection, please. And Mr Mayor, shut him up.
Can we have a one meeting, please, yeah? Can we have one meeting, please?
I won't make an intervention, Mr Mayor. councillor McGregor is digging his own hole quite nicely by himself.
The holes I dig are gross, like HS2, and necessary, unlike HS2. The important thing that we have this evening is a consequence. We make a comment about the levelling up agenda, eighteen million pounds' worth of extra funding made available to this council. Where's that mentioned? You've forgotten it, you have no memory of that because you don't understand the budget. The other issue is that if you look at the fourth item here, between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty-three, rail-term spending ahead, yeah. Perhaps the spending before two thousand and ten was grossly overrated, perhaps we were spending too much. Economic management is not the forte of most governments. The economy only grows when you have strong capital accretion, not capital accretion by local authorities. So when we look at the government must seriously consider, the council resolves, the government must seriously consider enabling councils in England to set their budget over multi-year cycles of at least ideally three years. You've taken that straight from the Premier League football, because they talk about the capacity of football clubs to maintain their balance sheet year after year after year and not go beyond certain criteria. We've seen the consequence. We've seen the consequence. Everton, a great team, lose points. Nottingham Forest lose points. Hanslow is going to lose points because you're trying to do something which is not within the current remit of modern finance. When you look at copying... Yeah, I'll take an intervention, why not?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Under twelve point four, thank you very much. Does Consular McGregor think that Man City might join Hanslow in a points deduction soon?
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, what is it?
Proposed suspension of standing orders on motions.
Okay. Yeah, agreed, okay, okay. Yeah. No, no, let me, let me decide, you know, you, you, you know, let me decide, let me decide, yeah. Consular McGregor, please, yeah. Consular Jack Emmsley, you had intervention, and, Consular McGregor, you sat down, so we'll take that, yeah? Yeah, agreed.
We'll put, put it to a recorded vote.
Carry on, Mr. McGregor.
Mr. Mayor, we put, put it to a recorded vote.
The final point I want to make about this is that this council does not believe in what has been said.
It is, it was agreed, please, carry on.
Mr. Mayor, your, your guidance, please. Do I carry on?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So when we look at the council resolution, it doesn't make sense because you can ask yourselves to write to the Secretary of State for Levelling Up and asking that, enabling councils, you've already got the medium-term financial strategy. That was put in place in nineteen eighty-three by the Thatcher government. The medium-term financial strategy is already there, and if you can't use it, it's because you're not competent to use it. Mr. Mayor, this is a stinking motion.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Can the question now be put?
We'll put that to a recorded vote, please, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yeah. We need to vote, yeah? So hand over to Chief Executive, yeah?
Members, a request for a recorded vote on the, that the vote should be put has been requested and seconded, and as a consequence of that, I am going to read out each of you individually and ask you to vote for, that, or against it, or to abstain. So, Consular Aksa Ahmed.
For.
Consular Mohamed Shakil Akram.
For.
Consular Madia Hesim.
For.
Consular Lily Bath.
For.
Consular Rashid Bhatti.
For.
Consular Joanna Bedov.
Against.
Consular Dan Bowring.
For.
Consular Tom Bruce.
For.
Consular Gazalabat.
For.
Consular Sami Chowdhury. Oh, sorry, pardon me, Consular Unsa Chowdhury.
For.
Consular Badna Chopra.
For.
Consular Amy Croft.
For.
Consular Sukh Bidalwal.
For.
Consular Catherine Dunn.
For.
Consular Jack Emmsley.
Against.
Consular Adish Farmerhan.
For.
Consular Richard Foot.
For.
Consular Gabriella Giles.
Against.
Consular Ranjit Gill.
Against.
Consular Ajma Garawal.
For.
Consular Pritham Garawal.
For.
Consular Vikram Garawal.
For.
Consular Riaz Ghol.
For.
Consular Vishal Gurung.
For.
Consular Alan Joseph.
Against.
Consular Nuh Kalim. No, yeah, sorry, pardon me, of course, she wasn't here last time either. Consular Farah Cameron.
For.
Consular Afzal Kiani.
For.
Consular Gomelal.
For.
Consular Guy Lambert.
For.
Consular, Consular Karim Malik.
For.
Consular Gerald McGregor.
Against.
Consular Junamir.
For.
Consular Alan Mitchell.
For.
Consular Ron Mishiso.
Against.
Consular Samina Naghr.
For.
Consular Shantanu Rajewat.
For.
Consular Sayarazha.
For.
Consular Faran Rahman.
For.
Consular Denise Said.
For.
Consular Sue Sampson.
For.
Consular Baro Sarai.
For.
Consular Salman Shaheen.
For.
Consular Marina Sharma.
For.
Consular Jati Sharma.
For.
Consular Emma Sidhu.
For.
Consular Ragwinder Sidhu.
For.
Consular Aftav Siddiki.
For.
Consular Karen Smith.
For.
Consular John Stroud Turp.
For.
Consular Kuldeep Tak.
Against.
Consular Peter Thompson.
Against.
Consular John Todd.
Against.
Consular Mohammed Emei. And Consular Reese Williams.
For.
That's carried, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Sorry. And the question being put, so the question being put, so therefore, the question has been put.
Can I now ask Consular Pritham Grewal to sum up if you wish to?
Nothing to add on, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Or, or, Mr. Mayor, sorry, a recorded vote.
We...
We apologize for this behaviour.
Okay. Can I just say something? Yeah, because it's, it's asked for recorded votes, we, you know, we know that our audience are waiting for us there, we can only apologize for this, you know, it's delayed, please bear with us and we'll try our best to finish ASAP, yeah? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, again, if you could indicate, each of the members of the council have already fought against or wish to abstain against this motion, I'm going to call you out in turn. Consular Aksa Ahmed.
For.
Consular Mohamed Shakil Akram.
For.
Consular Madia Hesim.
For.
Consular Lily Bath.
For.
Consular Rashid Bhatti.
For.
Consular Joanna Bedov.
Against.
Consular Dan Bowring.
For.
Consular Tom Bruce.
For.
Consular Gazalabat.
For.
Consular Unsa Chowdhury.
For.
Consular Badna Chopra.
For.
Consular Amy Croft.
For.
Consular Sukh Bidalwal.
For.
Consular Catherine Dunn.
For.
Consular Jack Emmsley.
Against.
Consular Adish Farmerhan.
For.
Consular Richard Foot.
For.
Consular Gabriella Giles.
Against.
Consular Ranjit Gill.
Against.
Consular Ajma Garawal.
For.
Consular Pritham Garawal.
For.
Consular Vikram Garawal.
For.
Consular Riaz Ghol.
For.
Consular Vishal Gurung.
For.
Consular Alan Joseph.
Against.
Consular Nuh Kalim, oh, sorry, pardon me, excuse me on that, Consular Farah Cameron.
For.
Consular Afzal Kiani.
For.
Consular Gomelal.
For.
Consular Guy Lambert.
For.
Consular, Consular Karim Malik.
For.
Consular Gerald McGregor.
Against.
Consular Junamir.
For.
Consular Alan Mitchell.
For.
Consular Ron Mishiso.
Against.
Consular Samina Naghr.
For.
Consular Shantanu Rajewat.
For.
Consular Sayarazha.
For.
Consular Faran Rahman.
For.
Consular Denise Said.
For.
Consular Sue Sampson.
For.
Consular Baro Sarai.
For.
Consular Salman Shaheen.
For.
Consular Marina Sharma.
For.
Consular Jati Sharma.
For.
Consular Emma Sidhu.
For.
Consular Ragwinder Sidhu.
For.
Consular Aftav Siddiki.
For.
Consular Karen Smith.
For.
Consular John Stroud Turp.
For.
Consular Kuldeep Tak.
Against.
Consular Peter Thompson.
Against.
Consular John Todd.
For.
Consular Mohammed Emei.
For.
And Consular Reese Williams.
For.
That motion is carried, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Now, move on to agenda item sixteen, proposed by Consular Ron Mishiso and seconded by Consular Alan Joseph. We therefore now move on to the second motion which can be found at agenda item sixteen. May I draw members' attention to a proposed amendment to this motion which can be found in the supplementary agenda published earlier this evening? I now therefore invite Consular Ron Mishiso to propose the motion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to firstly say an alcam to our Tamil friends who are here. They've been patient, they've been very polite, and I know the procedures have taken a bit of a while to get to where we are, but I have to give full credit to all of them here who have, who have arrived. And I also want to acknowledge Consular Rajewat and some of his cabinet members, Consular Bruce and Consular John Stroud Turp for being good hosts to our friends who came early this afternoon for a bit of tea and a chat before, and I listened closely and recorded the conversation of which you had, the speech in which you gave to them, which was very rousing, probably the best one, it's a shame that the audience here, our fellow members didn't get a chance to hear it, but I will send it to you so that you can share it with your team, Consular Rajewat. Thank you so much for being very gracious in hosting us for this. Today, we recognize the Tamil community for their invaluable contribution to our borough, and we would like to declare that as, January as the Tamil Heritage Month, that's the crack of what we're trying to achieve here, and I, let me tell you why. The London Tamil community originates, originating from Sri Lanka, India, Malaysia, Singapore, South Africa, and elsewhere, makes a strong contribution to the life of our city in general. So over, over three thousand Tamils from around the world have made Hanslow their home. We see some of them here today. There are estimated fifteen thousand Tamils working in our NHS as doctors, nurses, and frontline health professionals. In my work as a teacher, we have seventeen Tamil people working with us at my school where I work. We have been cared for by some of them in our health centers, we've been taught by some of them at GP surgeries and in, in, in our burrows, and a number of adult social care facilities which are operated by Tamil entrepreneurs, caring for some of the most vulnerable adults in our society. The British Tamils are serving as teachers, as teaching assistants, as in schools like in mine, across the burrows, including three language schools where the Tamil language and art is being taught to students here in Hanslow. There is one of the teachers who is actually here in our audience today. So British Tamils have made significant contribution to the social, economic, cultural, and political fabric of the United Kingdom. The social bit, I can attest, because I was invited to the Pongo on the fourteenth of January this year in central London, and then I was later invited by the Kingston Tamil Heritage Group to their celebration a week, a few days later. It was an amazing experience to see and to, to, to celebrate the heritage of harvest. So Tamils do a lot of things in this country, they're serving in the Royal Air Force, they're working during the Second World War, for example, they, they helped during the Covid nineteen, Tamil scientists worked on AstraZeneca vaccine, and we talked a lot about our late friend, Consular Steve Caren, who obviously did so much work during the Covid nineteen, the Tamils did just as much, if not more. On the second of December twenty twenty-one, to recognize the invaluable contribution of Tamil community made to our city, the London Assembly declared January as a Tamil Heritage Month, and has called for other London boroughs to ensure that these occasions are marked and that our much-loved Tamil community is supported across the city. We have seen some of that in some of the boroughs, and I'm delighted, delighted, absolutely delighted that Consular Rajewat has shown leadership in supporting this as well. But as a borough, we are profoundly, profoundly grateful for the work that our Tamil community does. Therefore, this council resolves to recognize our Tamil community for their invaluable contribution to our borough, and by doing, doing so, including the Tamil Heritage Month and Pongo Harvest Festival that commences from the fourteenth of January every year as part of our council event calendar. So we want this to be just as you would have done with the Black History Month, as we would have done with other months dedicated to, to great causes, we want Hanslow to be leading the way in making this, in, this pledge a reality. We also want to mark the Tamil Heritage Month and Pongo Harvest Festival to ensure that our much-loved Tamil community groups are supported. This isn't just about the, the community who are alive and adults now, but we're looking at the, the future of our Tamil community, including the young kids who, especially at some of these functions I've been to, they were the cornerstone of those celebrations. And of course, there are more to come, the generations of Tamils in London, in Hanslow are yet to be born, they need to be recognized, and therefore, that's why it's important to have this as a month dedicated to that community, because they do so much. Let me tell you why else they do so much, because...
Mr. Mishiso, can I ask you just to stick to the, 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 the motion here, which is written to everyone, stick to that, you know, don't, don't...
Sure, just, yeah, sure, I understand.
What you have written here already, yeah?
I understand, yeah. It was just to say that we share one thing in common, all of us, and that's the environment, and that's what the Tamil community represents. So to conclude, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, that we need, the Tamil community groups are, should be supported across the borough to celebrate the Tamil language, the culture, our environment, the arts, and heritage, and I commend this motion to the chamber.
Thank you, Consular Mishiso. May I now invite Consular Alan Joseph to second the motion and speak if, if you wish?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to start with the Tamil phrase, "Yaadum ure, yaavum keelir," which means to us, "All towns are one, all are our kin." Thank you to all the members of the Tamil community for being this evening. I come from a Tamil background, I speak Tamil, it is the oldest language that is alive. It has a rich history and tradition that spans several millennia. Its ancient roots come with a highly evolved culture that promotes universality of peace, joy, and happiness. From the ancient works of literature such as the Thirukural, a set of thousand three hundred and thirty couplets written over two thousand years ago, we have several treatise to approach life in its fullness. Guided by its literature and ancient wisdom and the quest for knowledge and development, the Tamil-speaking people are spread far and wide across the planet. They may be divided by several identities but unite as one under the language identity and would not spare any effort to assert it and keep it alive. Thus, the language has beaten all the arts to thrive and flourish around the world. Primarily ailing from the state of Tamil Nadu in India, the Tamils have spread across the globe. They were travelers, conquerors, merchants, exported as indentured labor, and the recent past have migrated as highly skilled human resources occupying key positions that propelled the technological revolutions. In the UK, we have around two thousand, two hundred thousand Tamils from Sri Lanka, India, Singapore, Malaysia, and other countries. Our Hanslow borough is owned to an estimated three thousand people of Tamil origin or Tamil-speaking people. They continue to contribute in building this great nation, which is built with the pillars of democracy, diversity, development, and freedom for all as doctors, nurses, social workers, engineers, lawyers, business professionals, sports persons, and other key professions. They came to UK inspired by this nation and how they become significant contributors in its greatness. British Tamils are proud contributors to the social, economic, cultural, and political fabric of the UK, from serving in the Royal Air Force during the Second World War to Tamil scientists working on the AstraZeneca vaccine. to Tamil scientists working on the AstraZeneca vaccine. British Tamil are serving as teachers, teaching assistants in school in Boru, including three language schools where Tamil language and art being taught to children living in Anslu. To recognise the invaluable contribution Tamil community made to our city, the London Assembly on second December 2021 declared January as Tamil Heritage Month and has called London Borus to ensure these occasions are marked and a much-valued Tamil community is supported across the city as practised in many other countries across the world. To take this step further, our council resolves to recognise our Tamil community for their invaluable contribution to our Boru by including Tamil Heritage Month and Punggal, the Harvest Festival, commences on fourteenth January every year as part of our council's event calendar. Tamil Heritage Month and Punggal, the Harvest Festival, to ensure that our much-valued Tamil community groups are supported across the Boru to celebrate Tamil language, its cultural, arts and heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, Corin. Thank you, councillor, councillor Joseph. May I now, we come, now come to the proposed amendment, which members can find it in the supplementary agenda. I invite councillor Shantru Rajewat to introduce it.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and vaneekam to all of you for coming here this evening. This motion and amendment, I hope, is something that is actually helpful, because this is a bit of a no-brainer. I had the pleasure of meeting the community, the Tamil community, early today, as councillor Mishiso referenced. And whilst I couldn't stay for as long as I perhaps would have liked, actually, the brief conversation that we had was really enlightening for me. I hope you got something from me in terms of this administration's focus on equality, diversity, the focus on our communities and the fact that diversity is something that really does define us in Hanslow rather than divide us in Hanslow. And that's something that we can be really, really proud of. And I think it's really important that in the amendment, to talk directly to the amendment, that not only do you hear it in this chamber, but actually, we set that out in writing to you as well. And that's what we're committing to doing as part of the amendment. But as councillor Joseph talked about, you know, the London Assembly has done this. But actually, there's a role across the country to recognise this and the diversity that exists within our country at a time when so much is used around identity and communities to try and divide us. Actually, we need to send a message as a nation that we stand united, we stand together. And so part of the amendment that I'm moving today also talks about writing to our MPs as a starting point, our two MPs in Hanslow, and asking them to raise the issue of Tamil Heritage Month, but also the celebration of our communities, whoever they are, wherever they are, as a matter of course, because I think that is important for social fabric. I think that's important for us in Hanslow. And it's important for us to continuously reaffirm that when we stand together, we stand strong and a strong Hanslow is a prosperous Hanslow. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajewat. May I now invite councillor Richard Foot to second the, to second the motion?
Thank you, Chair. Right, I did get up at five o'clock this morning to write my script and only to find that councillor Rajewat must have been looking over my shoulder. So I have nothing left to say, other than I would like to extend my personal welcome to the representatives of Hanslow Tamil community that are present here this evening. It is a great pleasure. And I will now formally second the amendment and sit down.
Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Foot.
I propose to move to the vote on the amendment.
Second. Is the vote put on this?
Yes, well, Mr Mit, as long.
So we'd like that recorded, please. Come in here.
Why are you doing this? You're not showing that you could protest it, are you? You're just playing around.
Yeah, please, Miss Mishiso, yeah. We can do it on the same thing, yeah? Yeah, there's one.
Oh, God. A recorded vote is being requested on the, that the vote be put on the amendment. So it's the, it's on the substantive issue about the vote being put on the amendment, not the amendment itself, is that clear? Yeah, good, right. So I'm going to call you out each in turn, each member. And for, against and abstain to that motion being put, okay. Councillor Aksa Ahmed.
Four.
Councillor Mohamed Shaqil Akram.
Four.
Councillor Madiya Hesim.
Four.
Councillor Lily Bath. Councillor Rashid Bhatti.
Four.
Councillor Joanna Bedow.
Four.
Councillor Dan Bowring.
Four, the Tamil community.
Councillor Tom Bruce. Councillor Tom Bruce. Councillor Gazalabat.
Four.
Councillor Sam, councillor Unsa Chaudhry.
Four.
Councillor Badna Chopra.
Four.
Councillor Amy Croft.
Four.
Councillor Sukh Bidalwal. Councillor Catherine Dunn. Councillor Jack Emslay.
Four, the substantive motion.
No, that's not what you're voting on, councillor. You're voting on whether the vote should be put. Yeah, councillor Adesh Farmahan.
Four.
Councillor Richard Foot.
Four.
Councillor Gabriella Giles.
Four.
Councillor Ranjig Gill.
Four.
Councillor Ajma Garrawal.
Four.
Councillor Pritam Garrawal.
Four.
Councillor Vikram Garrawal.
Nanku, which is Tamil for four.
Councillor Riaz Ghol. Councillor Vishal Gurung. Pardon me, sorry. Councillor Alan Joseph.
Four.
Councillor Farah Kamran. Councillor Afzal Kiani. Councillor Gomel Lal. Councillor Guy Lambert. Councillor Tony, oh, he's not here. Councillor Calum McMalick.
Four.
Councillor Gerald McGregor. Councillor Junamir. Councillor Alan Mitchell. Councillor Ron Mishiso. Councillor Samina Nagra. Councillor Shantanu Rajewat. Councillor Sayar Raza. Councillor Faran Rahman. Councillor Denise Said. Councillor Sue Sampson. Councillor Baro Sarai. Councillor Salman Shaheen. Councillor Marina Sharma.
Four.
Councillor Jati Sharma. Councillor Emi Sidhu.
Four.
And councillor Rigwinder Sidhu.
Four.
Councillor Aftav Siddiki. Councillor Karen Smith.
Four.
Councillor John Stroud Turp. Councillor Kuldeep Tak.
Four.
Councillor Peter Thompson. Councillor John Todd. Councillor Mohamed Emair. Councillor Rhys Williams.
Four.
That's unanimous, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, we are moving to vote.
Mr Mayor.
Yeah, we are going for this one. Yeah, we need to move for this one, substantive item first. Now, we are going to move, vote for the substantive item, for the recommendations.